You're watching CHCO TV's gavel-to-gavel coverage of the December 11th, 2024 Special Committee of the Whole Meeting for the Municipal District of St. Stephen. I'm Florence Mitchell. In today's meeting, committee will discuss the 2025 municipal budget. So let's join committee in the Moosehead Room at the Garcelin Civic Center in St. Stephen.
All right. Welcome, everyone, Municipal District of St. Stephen, Special Council Meeting of the Whole Agenda, Wednesday, December 11th, 2024, at 6:00 PM. And everybody is here. Before we begin, I'd like to respectfully acknowledge that we are gathered today on Ancestrals' unceded territory of the Passamaui people. And to get started, I'll take a mover and seconder for the agenda of the Special Committee of the Whole Meeting, December 11th, 2024, be approved.
So moved.
Counsel Hyslop, Counsel Harding, any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any posts? Seeing none, we are off. Okay. Any conflicts of interest this evening? Seeing none. All right. And we go on to the municipal budget 2025, and we'll start with capital budget.
Thank you, your worship. We did send this out in advance for council to take a look at. If you tried to print it, I apologize, it would have come up really, really small. So the ones on your table are really small, which is one of the reasons we sent it digitally, so you can zoom in, and we got it on the screens here. So basically, certainly in my time here, this is the first time we've brought you a capital plan in this type of format where we're actually identifying our projects right off the get-go. We used to just ask you for a contribution to reserve, and we'd make up, we'd do the projects during the year, partially because of our Streets Plan, but also just to be able to give you a full look at things that we're, we plan on doing in 2025 in kind of one snapshot. This is a really nice way to go. You'll notice across the top, we have various funding sources identified that could be used for any given project, from current year taxes through to long-term debt, things like that. So we tried to assign every project, or we did assign every project to a funding source, so you know anything in here is funded in one way, shape, or another. So the top section here in Transportation Services, this is your road study. This is the resurfacing plan that Dylan did. I was just saying to Sean before the meeting, one of the things that I really appreciate about Mr. Pickard, or the partner from Dylan that we work with, is they did the road study, and then his team did it, and then we sat down with Rory and Mr. Morton and Mr. Beach, and we ground-truthed all their stuff, because they're largely produced by the computer. And so we went through and the, and made sure that everything we did makes sense. Interesting thing, a few of the roads that were listed weren't even municipal roads, they were private roads, so we got to take those completely off the list. And a few of the ones that had really big costs on it, we realized, didn't actually warrant a full reconstruction. We could do a rehabilitation based on low-traffic volume, things like that. So we rationalized every recommendation for the 2025 year. So these numbers reflect the results of that product, that work is going through, and we brought down the price tag of these projects quite significantly based on, you know, taking the time to rationalize every, every one of them. So everything you'll see here, there's also a map that I have that we can show that shows where these projects are, but this would be your, one of your resurfacing plan. So of note, most things are coming from a current-year transfer to capital, to the capital fund, which is shown in your operating fund budget. The last draft of the operating fund budget you would have seen had a $1.2 million transfer. Looking at reduce, the next draft, based on this plan, would reduce that closer to $950,000, based on the cost reductions that we came up with. So most, you see, most of these, $393,000 and change of these roads are from the current year. A lot of that will come from our second year, from the second-year surplus that, as you recall, we strongly recommend only go to one-time costs, because we can't guarantee that it'll be there the next year, and hopefully it isn't, as we've talked about with financial management. So it's a great way to use that funds, is to do it one-time cost, fix the road, and move on. We have $120,000 one that'll come from the General Capital Reserve, and we're proposing that three, three projects be done through debt, through borrowing. Our debt ratio is very, very good. It's always been commented on our auditors, how low our debt actually is. So we're looking at $513,000 in roadwork being done next year using debt financing, and spreading that over the lifetime of the asset. One change that could happen between now and final approval, I do have a hiding here for sidewalk rehabilitation. Currently, we do, we are planning $100,000 of road sidewalk. It's sitting in your operating budget as an operating line. Probably we'll move that to transfer to capital fund and do it here, simply because this is kind of a great checklist for you guys for what did you, well, what did you guys do in 2025? You can pull out this plan, and these are all the nice tangible things you can show a citizen. It would be net zero on the actual budget, just changing so it will appear in this, in this chart. So I don't know if there's any questions on the road, road, street work proposal before we move on to any other sections. Over there, your worship.
My question is just where Hartford Lane is.
Milltown.
Milltown, right, ready to make the curve past the police station on the right-hand side? There's very little lane there. Yep.
Next one up from scooting.
There you go. There you go.
Everybody knows we're scooting.
I know how to get to my kid's friend's house, that's all.
Thank you. I see a line in there with nothing beside it, as the traffic pedestrian service is street lighting, and we had briefly mentioned that last week, that our, our streetlights are in dire need of replacing, and the cost of that, is that somewhere else, or is this there as a zero to let us discuss?
Nope. We actually, it's another one of those ones that's a revolving conversation as budget is, that draft state. Mr. Morton and Mr. Beach paid me a visit just the other day, and we had a good, long chat about the, about the traffic lights. Mr. Beach had some information that I didn't previously have regarding the condition of the traffic lights, and more, probably more importantly, the fact that we have a, we have a new service provider that does, to do the maintenance on them, and they're not in as dire a state as we thought. We actually talked with the folks from Dylan as well over lunch the other day, and when we look at the 2026 paving, which is really what I was concerned about, it's going to, it should go from the, the bridge by the traffic circle and down, and only go through two, two intersections should be covered, which are two of the best intersection traffic light scenarios we have right now. There may be some minor purchases that need to happen that we can do through our normal operating, but no need to worry about $400,000 complete rebuilds, which was the fear previously. So things are in a lot better shape than we, than we originally thought. Feel free to correct me if I, if I got that wrong.
No, that's, that's correct. I mean, there were, there have been issues, of course, because it's a hodgepodge of, of things, and one of, one of the issues was the old incandescent-style bulbs. We had a bunch of those, mixed with LED, the modern stuff, and over time, we have managed to keep the old heads, but replace the fixtures within. So if you're out there and you're looking at this stuff, and you're wondering what I'm talking about, the yellow heads that have the lights in them are old, legacy stuff. The newer stuff are the black ones, and you'll see less and less of the, the yellow heads. But the yellow heads now have LED lights in them. My concern was more around the controls and stuff, and the wires that run under the streets, and did that need to be replaced? And we're a little more confident that we can, we can manage that, and we don't have to tear up the streets, but we're gonna, we'll look at them as we proceed down King Street.
So the tentative goal is maybe in 2026, we may need to look at that when the streets are being redone anyway? Is that, or are we talking a longer term before we have to think about it?
Well, some of the repairs that, that we would say we might want to do on the ones up, up at the other end, where we are doing the paving, the repairs that we would do don't really require us to touch the pavement. It's just maybe replace a head, or run a new wire, or something like that. When we get, if the province decides to do more work on King Street in 2027, we'll look at the lights as we come along, and if we think we need to tear something up, we'll come, come to you at that point and discuss it.
Just to follow, just to follow up on the road situation, one column that isn't showing on the screen, but I have, happen to have it open in front of my computer. You recall when we did the road assessment, the, there was something called a PCI, Pavement Condition Index. It's just a hidden column on this sheet, actually, it is actually there. But just for, for your knowledge and the public's knowledge about why we chose the streets we did, if I go down the PCI list for these roads, keeping in mind that 100 means a brand-new road, you're looking at, I can go from 10, 10, 12, 13, 16, 17, 17, 17, 18, 22, 33, 38, 39, and then preventative maintenance only on the one, on one that's 69. So why did, you know, if you ever get asked, why did we choose the roads we did? It isn't, it is a very much, these are the absolute worst ones, that we're, we're starting with the worst and improving everything as we go. So I just wanted to make sure that, remind you that there is a, a scientific rationale as to why we're, why we're choosing the, the ones we have. Moving on, if I can make a cursor to come back, there we go. So also in Transportation Services, we've had a back on the replacement schedule for a long, long, long time. So we are, we are proposing that that finally be replaced, and if you cross, go across, that is, we're proposing that as a debt financing as well for $220,000. We are looking at replacing a 3/4 ton pickup truck, that's a 2010 Chevrolet, that needs to be replaced. So that's, got that in for $88,000, so that's for Transportation Services. And then for parks, we have a 2003 Sonoma that's been, that desperately needs to be replaced for 42. So those, those vehicles coming out of the, the current year. So facilities and parks, these are the ones that usually get the public and councillors excited, because these are, these are the fun ones often. We have, we are proposing $125,000 towards rehabilitation of the tennis courts in Milltown. We believe that that will rectify the problem at this point. Kev's still doing some work to confirm that number before final approval, but we do, we're showing the airport building, you'll notice it is not listed as a funding source. It's been a request from the airport attendant for the last five years, probably. I didn't want to presume that that would happen until council made a long-term, determined the fate of, the longer-term fate of the airport, whether that's us, RSC, private enterprise. So, but I've always promised the airport attendant that it would be part of any presentation I made, so he knew it wasn't forgotten, but at this point, we're not recommending that it proceed unless you tell us otherwise. The Milltown pool liner replacement, we've, we heard a lot about that last year, the Gorilla Tape and whatnot keeping it going. With the funding we have, we believe we can replace that next year and get that back to holding water instead of constantly losing water, which was significant. Security camera upgrades, Mr. Sumner has spoken at council previously about some of the issues we've been dealing with inside the GCC. We're proposing the installation of 12 new cameras, adding 12 cameras to our system, focused on stairways, some of our blind spots throughout the building, to help with our, our security and, and dealing with problem issues. And then Rotary Park, obviously, we've all talked about Rotary Park over the time, so we are remarking $25,000 to undertake the work that, that we had conceptualized last year, to make that a better, better user experience for those using those facilities. Again, all current, all out of the current-year fund. The last one we really have, oh, sorry.
So the Rotary Park, we were looking at upgrades, is that roadway that's going in differently, or is that, what does that include?
Yeah, we've looked at a few options for, for there. It'd be roadway going up in between the current fence at the Legion and the changing room that's there. It's using some materials, it's, a lot of it is fencing as well, because having a road cutting through the two athletic fields, if we had that and just left it open, then it's open to all kinds of elements, you know, dog mess, people going on with ATVs, just stuff that, you know, we want to keep off the fields, because they're our only athletic field, so, yeah, it would just be, just to create more parking, because as we saw at the end of this season, it was getting busy around there, so.
So, yeah, I was kind of, I don't know, I'm kind of unaware of that. I knew that there was a plan there for the, between the next street up, between the two, we had a right-of-way there, and we seen the conceptual plan of the, of the parking lot with the green space in between, but I was unaware of the, between the two fences and going behind the field.
Yeah, on paper, the perceptual drawings to go between, come off of the street, the next one down, marks, yeah. Main, sorry, main, yes. It looks good on paper, but when you got there, it wasn't going to work very well. There's some drainage, was going to create drainage issues. You're going right between some houses there, pretty close to the houses. So we looked, and we walked, we walked the field, and it won't take a lot to create the road there, because there's a very good base already there on the field, unlike the other option that was going to require, you know, removing topsoil and, and non-road-bed type materials. So it was going to cost a lot more money to go that route, and probably weren't going to have as good a product, so we recommended what, what he's proposing there. Just put in some fence and, and come down through there, and it solves your problem.
Thank you, Mayor. The airport building, I understand not putting the whole thing to replace it in, but the airport is kind of a unrealized gem, I think, for, for what it offers to us as far as customs clearances and ability for people to pre-register to land. I'm not sure of the technical terms, and, and there are a lot of small planes, and there are people with a lot of money that have small planes, and, and they use it. I do think it's an underutilized gem, and I know the mayor made this case at the Regional Service Commission table many years ago. I would like to see it bumped up on our priorities of discussions coming up. I don't know what everybody else thinks about it, but that's just mine, when I did the tour, and I don't know if, we may not be able to replace the building, but could we consider doing something to make it a little better for those pilots who are coming in and needing to rest there for a little bit? I don't know. Just, it seems like a, a gem that we're not fully realizing, in my opinion only. I understand that. Just, just a thought, if we could start small and start investing.
Sorry. Counselor Harding?
Thank you. Yeah, I think you're correct, Joyce. I think that it is a gem. For years and years and years, we had airport committees, we worked on, His Worship was on one of them, I guess I was on the same one. I, when I looked, and I was excited when I saw that maybe we were going to spend money as $500,000, I thought that might be a little bit too much. But yeah, I think that we could do something. I'm not sure what it could be, but I do know that they have, the time that I was involved, they would have these fly-ins every summer, maybe twice a year, these small plane fly-ins, and they'd have whatever, a lunch, whatever. And yes, if we could have something to, to make, make it a little bit more comfortable for the people who fly in. Thank you.
Counsel Greenlaw?
Yeah, just before we invest anything major, though, we need to get a business case done, and I think you're working on that at the Regional Service Commission, that's been talked about, and they're looking for funding to make sure that we know where we're going, what direction we're going with the airport. Keep us up to date on that, Mayor. Thank you.
Correct. Yep. Go ahead, Jeff.
Yeah, I guess when it comes to that, given the, the size of the proposal that I've received many times from Mr. Smith at the airport, and the investment there, even if, even if we were to proceed down this road, we would be recommending borrowing for it, which means that, quite frankly, it doesn't, if it doesn't appear on this plan right now, that's okay. We can, you can make that decision down the road. It just, we, I really wanted to make sure that, I held my commitment to Mr. Smith, that it would be identified as a need, and, and allow the, the political process and then the discussion with the RSC to proceed, and, because I do believe, I also believe it's a regional asset, it's not just a municipal asset, and, and should be, would best be held either in, in private hands as a business, or at the RSC level, much like Mayor Mashi and other small municipal airports have been transferring. So, so that's, that's the only reason, but you could, down the road in 2025, at any point, decide that you wanted to do something, and we just have to go through the borrowing process to, to make that happen.
Counsel Hyslop?
Yeah, I, well, I was out there to the same tour, and I do agree somewhat, but I just don't have enough information to base the decision on, because I don't know the numbers of how many people use that campus, I don't know how many people fly in, what is utilized, where would they go? There's a lot of, a lot of stuff that has to be built there before we can, before I could make a, you know, a sound decision on it, or any kind of decision at all. Like, I don't, it's great that they can clear customs, but how many people do that a year? Here, we don't know. Is it 10, or is it 110, or is it 3,010? I don't know. And that's the information that I would need to know, and how much is utilized, and how much it benefits our direct area, you know, it might, it might actually benefit other people outside our area, and, you know, we shouldn't be investing with them. So, there's a lot of information there.
That's definitely something that we, we, we're talking about, but it's almost one of those things, it's almost, it's got to get to the point where we're going to almost lose it before someone will step up, I think, and that's, I think that's, I fear that's where we're at. But, but it's been talked about, and, and the people know, so hopefully they get on and support us, because it is, it is a regional airport. But, anyway. All right, that's good for now.
So last item on, on our capital plan is, it's a big one, it's the King Street Lift Station renewal. Back when it first got on the radar, I think it was, had a price tag of close to $600,000. Unfortunately, it's been pushed off and pushed off, and the price tag's about doubled, according to the recent engineers' estimates, who have just done a couple of these projects lately, so they know how the tenders have been coming in. We are showing this one as to be funded by CCBF, as, as we all know it, the gas tax fund. It's probably unlikely that we would have the entire $1.2 million in 2025 at this stage. It'd probably be divided up over a couple of years, do engineering in year one, build in year two, or, or some portion, depending on how the, the scheduling rolls out. But we are, it is, at this point in time, the only, I think it's the only project left on our last gas tax plan that we provided to the government. So that's, it's the only project we're proposing, because it's critical that it get done. Our guys have done excellent, excellent work, keeping it going and through, through some tough times. Every time I leave town, I think, I think that's when it's going to go, and Sean's going to call me, but, so we are, we're anxious to get this project done and, and keep that infrastructure running the way it needs to. So, so $1.2 million from, from gas tax to, to renew that facility.
Counsel Wright?
Just so that we, like you say, having this list, so we can tell citizens or citizens can see what we've done. I'm not familiar with what a lift station does or is, could you just break that down for me?
The lift stations push the nasty stuff that we flush down our toilets out of low areas, so most of it runs by gravity. You flush your toilet, gravity takes it, but there are low spots in the community that it needs to pump it over the hill, so to speak. This one, if you, if you come down the hill from the high school, as soon as you cross the bridge, you look on the right, you see a, a structure there, that's it. We've, we've really had to baby that thing and nurse it. There's been a lot of costs associated with keeping that running. One of the discussions at the last meeting was hired equipment. We've spent a lot of money on hired equipment. You'll see vacuum trucks there almost weekly at times, just to keep that thing going, so that it doesn't spill its contents out onto King Street.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Infrastructure 101.
As, as we move forward into the new year, I mean, there may be some grants that are available for some of these things, too, especially the recreation part of it. So they'll still be, obviously, they'll still be looked at, so we might be able to reduce something if we do. I know there's recreation grants out there, I don't know, I'm surprised there's not anything for, for distribution systems or lift stations. That's the gas tax. That's what it was supposed to be meant for, we were using it on roads a lot, I know, but I know for sewage, water, water and sewer, the separation, there was a lot of, there's a lot of funding for, so unfortunately, that's a big price tag, though. Huge.
I have a question.
Counsel Otis?
So right up above where it says total community health, safety, and security, I know, I think Counsel Greenlaw and I have talked about it, there's a small $4,000 grant, maybe you can speak to it, Counselor Greenlaw? I can't remember what the organization was, where they support communities with community safety. I think it's only around $4,000. I would love to invest in that, I just can't remember the name of the initiative. Yeah, just, it's $4,000, and to me, just having it done, just, it shows that we're taking initiative and that we care, so, I mean, to me, it's a small price to pay for just, to demonstrate that we're committed to that in some regard, right?
Yeah, absolutely. Counsel Greenlaw has shared that information with me about the community safety survey as well. It wouldn't show up on a capital list, because it's not, it's not capital. It might have recommendations that lead to a capital list next year, but, so it would come out of your operating fund, which, whether it would be, you know, we could take it out of one of our special projects lines or something like that. So there would be, if you chose to go that route, there would be funding we could, we could source for that, but it just wouldn't show up on this list. Oh, for me, just wanted to follow up on Counsel Hyslop's comment. Yeah, absolutely, if it's, if it's in that first column of current year money, and, and there is a granting opportunity, we, you know, we'd definitely chase that and spend someone else's money before we spent ours. But the nice thing is, with approaching our, our capital plan this way, like you say, for the first time certainly since I've been here, we know what those projects are. If you approve this plan, we know what the projects are, and it makes it way, much easier for Kev and his team, or, or the grants person at the RSC, to help us identify what those grant funds we're looking for, is because we know the project. Too often, we, we put money aside, and then we see a grant, and then we try and find a project to fit the grant, and it's just not, that's not good planning, that's not a good way of using, of using funds, and municipalities across Canada do it, because we're always, we're always chasing money. But to have the, the projects, the key projects identified and approved, and then just being able to see if we can offset the costs we've already planned to do, makes it much easier for us on the administrative side.
All right, everyone good? Oh, Counsel Greenlaw?
I just want to get it in all in context here, like you, you talked about the overall number, I think you said was around 950,000?
Yeah, 948.
Yeah, 948. Yep. And then, so what you're saying is the $900,000 surplus we have from 2023, you brought that forward, and you're using that for this, right? Okay, thank you.
Okay. Are we good to go on to utility?
I have one more question.
Sure. Counsel Otis?
So in terms of the list of roads, so tonight, do you think that's pretty much solidified that list there, and could we just have a copy of that list to even share with people? I mean, people ask me about certain roads all the time, so when we're talking tonight, we're just talking as a group, but is that pretty much, have you nailed down that's pretty much the direction we're going for those roads, based on the Dylan Engineering consultation, right?
Yeah, absolutely. Using the approach that, that council gave us with the, with the study, and the work that Mr. Beach and Mr. Morton and I and Dylan worked together on, we're strongly recommending that we stick to the, the philosophy that was in the report, which, that's why I put the image up for you. It does, it's hard to really make out, but you can see, you know, as far as the urban, urban core area, there's something a little bit everywhere in that map. Milltown, out on the, on the east end, and, and some core stuff, so it's a nice balance as well, everybody's getting something out of it. So we're strongly going to recommend that you, that this capital plan be approved, and that these roads be the ones that, that are done in 2025. 2025.
Also, just remind me of that scale, and if you can include, or where can I access what that, what's the scale they use? What's it called?
PCI.
PCI, yes, okay. So is there a copy of something that I could share with people about how they classify? And then that will help people understand, because people always argue that their road is worse. But if I can actually classify why Dylan, what tool that they use, and share that, I think that will be helpful.
Yeah, I have, actually, what's on my screen, actually in front of me, is the actual, the revised version that posts our ground truthing, from Dylan Engineering themselves, identifying these roads, and it shows the PCI. It also shows some, the work notes that some areas need curb, some, like, there's some other things that are included on some of these roads, because we know Garden Street has been an issue for a long, long before I got here, and has been on the list. It's now on the list, but we've also sat down and said, okay, if we're going to do Garden Street, what other needs does it have? Does it need, do we need to look at curbing? Do we need to look at sidewalk? How's that going to work? When I send, I'll send all of Counsel these, the report, but you'll see that those notes from, that we talked about, have been captured by Dylan to make sure that when we tend to the projects, or we proceed with them with our own crew, those notes are there as to remind us that we have these other things as well.
Thank you. Okay, let's step on over to utility operating fund budget.
Thank you, Worship. So what's before you, was sent earlier this afternoon to Counsel, is the draft of the utility operating fund. There is not, typically, there's not a lot of, I'll call it discretionary funding, unlike your operating fund, your general operating fund. This, we've calculated what it costs to run your water utility, your steel utility system. What, the good news is, the budget we're putting in front of you right now presumes no change at all to the rate structure, or to the rates themselves, the revenue generated from the rates. We, I will put Counsel on notice that Mr. Morton and I are working on a potential new rate structure that will generate the revenue required, but in a different fashion, due to a whole bunch of stuff that we'll explain to you when we look at rate options. We know that the water rates are an impediment to economic development. We've heard that from our planning team at the RSC. We've heard that from Peter St. Stephen. We've heard that from developers directly. That's one of the key issues, is we need to generate enough revenue to run the system, but while at the same time, do it in a way that doesn't create extra barriers for the economic development that we drastically need. So that's one of the issues. The, there's something else I was going to mention about this budget, too. Fill in the blank. So, I mean, we're happy to take questions on this, but we're, oh, I know, it was, it was, Mr. Morton and I met with a consulting team that we engaged this afternoon. We met with them after they were doing a review of our water system, our potable water system, and how to optimize it, and give us recommendations on how to improve it. As we chatted, one of, I mean, obviously, water quality is number one, and all the health regs. One of the things that was coming up as we talked was, a lot of the things that they're finding are unnecessary costs. They're costing us money because we're not doing things the best way, or, you know, the most efficient way. So one of the things we're looking at, not only the revenue side, but finding, implementing some recommendations to reduce the cost side, which is going to, which is, that's really going to be the important part. If we can get those costs down, we can bring those rates down. And that's going to be a key component to everything. And from our perspective, everything is on the table, from the meter reading, to the way that the Maxwell Crossing pump house operates, to like, to the staffing assigned. We've put everything on the table as a fair game, and are working on, essentially, what I call a blank slate exercise. If we had to start it today, how would we build it, and compare that to where we are today, and see how we can change, you know, evolve over time. These consultants, I was quite impressed with them. Sean spent a lot more time with them than I did, but just in the few, the couple of days they've been here, they've already identified a number of things that can help us out significantly. So I think in, over time, you're going to see some of these costs also start to drop. And that'll be a really good thing as well. But if there's specific questions on any of the items, feel free. And Sean, if you have any commentary you want to add, it's your system.
Well, I think he covered that pretty well. There are, you know, it is an old system. You know that. There's no surprise there. And some of the things that these guys are going to recommend are more to do with the control of what we currently have. They recognize, just like we recognize, that down the road, there may be some bigger infrastructure things that need to come. But that's not really what they're here to recommend. It's the system you currently have, how can you optimize that? And then that, once we optimize that, we have, we can start looking at the future and, okay, you know, do we need another source? Do we need to twin this line, or replace this, or replace that? That's a little further down the road. But this was a look at what we currently have, and how best to manage that. And I think it's going to be, I think we're going to get good results from what they report back to us.
Counsel Greenlaw?
Yeah, just a couple of quick things. I see operating reserve zero. Is that accurate?
As far as transferring in at this time? Yes.
The, is the recovery on the insurance damages? I see 400,000 was done in 2023, and then nothing for this year, nothing for next year. So are we pretty much? Yeah.
No, Mr. Godson and I were discussing that actually this morning, as we were trying to put some things in touch here. Essentially, what we, last year, we guessed at the amounts, but it's, we're treating it as a balancing, right? It's, anything that comes in under that line will also have an offsetting revenue. So we have zero on both sides. We can put 400 on both sides, but it doesn't change the bottom line. But that's what, it's an in and an out scenario. So at this point, because we're not really sure what's going on, we just left it at zero, but it'll be. If it comes in and goes in one line, it'll show up on the other side. If I may, Worship, just, while we're talking about reserves, why I brought it up. We do have, in the most recent draft that Mr. Godson was able to make this afternoon, we do have a capital, the transfer to capital reserve of $166,265, $255. That can be moved around, whether it goes to capital or operating, or it was just, we needed, we were, it balances the budget, so that's what's left. We can move that to wherever Counsel sees fit. Generally speaking, we're capital intensive when it comes to the utility, so that's why we dedicated it to go towards the capital reserve. It must stay in the water, yes. Yep. Frank, did you want to add, did you have anything you wanted to add?
I'm just going to, just to Mr. Greenlaw's question, we certainly have a lot more expenditures in terms of, that relates to the lagoon. But as Jeff said, essentially, the way that works is that we have to recognize it, but we recognize the revenue portion of it as it comes in from the insurance. We also recognize the expenditure related to it, and that's going to be broken down between current expenditures, because we have things like the power and our diesel and that type of thing. But there's also capital expenditures in there, and they're related, just go into the capital fund. So it basically nets out. And since we don't know what that cost is going to be for 2025, we're hoping that that project's complete, but we don't know what the cost will be. It'll be a net zero anyway. So we do have to another budget. We hope, yeah, we hope it's a net zero. That's right.
Okay. Counsel Wright?
Thank you. As you know, the 2023 budget was set before we actually came in. We didn't work on that budget. I see other revenue from own source back on the first page was much higher that year. Was there an anomaly that year? It was 665,024 in 2023 actuals, and budget 2025 is 176,100.
We're at the budget for '23. I don't have that breakdown here, but if you want to, I can get back to it in a few minutes.
Yeah, we can email you the response if you like.
Yeah.
I think we drew it on the reserves, but I'm not positive, so we'll double check.
Okay, anything more? Oh, sorry, Counsel Harding.
Thank you, Worship. At the last meeting, I brought up maybe saving money for a new fire hall. But I was told it should come tonight, if I'm going to have a question about that. Anyway, I think that that's something maybe that we should do, is start putting money away for a new facility. I don't know how much we should put away. I mean, we did that for the fire truck, and it proved very good. So, I don't know, in time, I don't know how much one of your facility would cost. But anyway, I think that we should, yeah. Yeah, more on a lift station. Anyway, I think that's something we should do. Thank you, Worship.
Counsel, do you want to see the map? Is that where you're going with?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Wasn't you looking at the top of the other budget, the budget or the map?
I just wanted to see the red lines where they're.
So you'll see this little curve one year. This is Wall Street? Or Chipman? Yeah, Wall Street. We did this section unplanned, this year. So we're actually, you know, we're going to finish off that loop, so that'll all be new. But that's what that one is.
Unit. Unit, yeah.
Finishing that job off.
Go ahead, Wright.
Actually, it relates to the question that was asked earlier. That's, the biggest part of that is the insurance, really.
Counsel Otis?
I just wanted to add, I agree with Counsel Harding. I think that's a good idea. And I also think that our fire hall should consider rural and urban and be centralized. It would be great to see some consultation about where the best location would be. But I wondered, is that something that regionally, we could qualify for money to help, just because of the fact that I know sometimes we help out our friends in other areas? I'm just wondering that, just generally. Is that something that the RSC has incorporated in their plans, municipal plans? I can't remember that coming up. No? Okay, well, I just wasn't sure if it's a, if it can be deemed a regional type initiative, but it's pretty wide.
Sorry, I just, I just, so we, and we don't support each other financially, but we support each other with our, with our resources. Mutual, yes, exactly, yeah. Right, yes, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, obviously, Sean and I have had a number of conversations about the property that, you know, our current facility on Union, from a public works perspective and a fire perspective. It's not a young building. It has its issues, roof being one of them. And so, one of the things, we've had debates about, many debates over time about locating, you know, where that could be for access to the highway, access to all parts of the municipality. It's something that definitely, I know that, last I knew, the volunteer firefighters were in favor of us also exploring in conjunction with them. So it's definitely a project that we should be looking at exploring and potentially earmarking some reserve money for. So yeah, that's, that's an important one. That's absolutely.
Okay, are we at near the end, are we? All right, so no more, any more questions on utility? So we're kind of staying status quo as last year for now, and then?
Just clarity for us, I'm going to take it as direction that the capital plan is acceptable to present to Counsel for approval, and the utility plan, the utility budget is acceptable for presentation for approval. Okay, good job, guys.
Well, it's, you got to follow the studies, you know, and that's what we got. We got a study, and it shows us what we need to do, and let's follow it. Okay. Yes, you're sure, Ken?
Yeah, tennis court, Milltown. What do you plan on doing with that now? Is that going to be resurfaced entirely, or?
Yeah, I think, I think there would, some foundation required, because we have seen issues with the roots and the cracking. So whether we can, whether that will be, cover the 125,000, hoping it was, that was kind of the number which was earmarked for that, and even with inflation. But I'm not saying Sean and his crew can help, but.
You're doing something up there, that's all. I want to make sure. Thank you.
Counsel Wright?
I was just going to follow up on Counsel Harding's comment, that I know we, the capital budget as presented, we feel confident is good to come to Counsel, but should, or could we tuck something in there as a Kickstarter to the new, to a new fire station, or is that something we just have to wait on?
Well, I think we're going to want to see the budget first, but go ahead.
Similar to Counsel Otis's comment earlier, the capital plan as presented is, that's an expenditure plan, right? So if we put it on there, we're going to spend it. But as far as the transfer to reserves out of your general fund, that's where you would see that. We'd add $100,000, say. And when we did that, you would earmark it, when we do the reserve transfer, you'd put what we call a treasurer's note, because you can't, you can't dedicate it in this province for some reason. But you put a treasurer's note saying, you know, towards new fire hall slash public works facility, or something to that. And then as we have it in our books, it would constantly show that. And that's the same approach we use for the ladder truck.
Thank you for clarifying how that would work. And that, just because it's not on there doesn't mean we can't talk about it. Thank you.
Okay, let's end this, and I will take a mover and seconder pursuant to Section 68, Bracket 1, the Local Governments Act. Counsel, move to a closed session for a purpose, for the purpose of discussing one financial matter. Counsel Eastman? Counsel Cornish? Questions? All those in favor? Oh, you got a question? On the close? On the close? Oh, well, okay, you're talking about a whole different thing. But I'm talking about going moving in the close. Okay, we're moving in the close. Okay, well, all right. Any questions on moving into closed? All right, all those in favor? Close, seeing none, we're moving to close.